All right, I'd like to call this May 15th, 2014 municipal council meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
No changes.
All right, have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item two, receive and consider certified election returns from the Old Stewart Road annexation area. Election held on May 6, 2014. Sponsor is Ms. Kathy McLean.
We did receive these certified election returns. I have copy in your manual and I recommend accept these returns.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Looks like there's a big turnout.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Almost forgot.
I didn't think we had to vote on that.
On to old business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 1st, 2014. Motion for approval on the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item four. Consider on second and final reading ordinance 140403, establishing zoning for the Old Stewart Road annexation area. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, as you stated, this establishes zoning for the area which you just received the results from the election form. And this area, again, is the Old Stewart Road area. And the ordinance establishes CI, commercial industrial mixed use zoning for this area. This was what was identified in the plan of services and was approved in the resolution which called for the referendum and adopted the plan of services. The planning commission has recommended CI zoning. The planning department concurs and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item five, consider on second and final reading ordinance 140404, closure and abandonment of a portion of Holly Avenue and declaring it a surplus. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance would close the last 25 feet, which is undeveloped right of way of Holly Avenue. The property owners on both sides of this section of the right of way have agreed to the closure and abandonment. This closure and abandonment was approved by the planning commission. It was recommended by the planning department. We've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I do have, I do have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I just want to just, just add this for a second here. We, we kind of went over this in our work session because it's just, it's just, these are common sense repairs to our ordinance, our amendments to our zoning code. But these things really are important because this, the, all these things demonstrate the growth that we have in Cookeville. The things like microbreweries, recycling, these, it's kind of a big deal. And I appreciate the planning commission going through the process of thinking through this and making sure that we're, you know, we're kind of heading in the right direction. And we're not just doing a, kind of a knee jerk reaction to some of this stuff going on. So I-
Trying to be proactive when we can.
And that, that means a lot to me. But most of all, it means a lot because it means some of the things that the administration, council, all the people involved, they're doing is make, it, Cookeville's growing. And these are good things. So thank you, Mr. Mills, for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, on to new business. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 140507, amending the budgets of the various funds and departments of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will amend four of the budgets for the city of Cookeville. The first fund that we'll look at is the city's general fund. We have additional revenue to recognize of a total of $331,000. Couple of items, larger items within the revenue that we've received is additional $60,000 in delinquent property tax, $45,000 over the estimate for state income tax, $35,000 in additional building permit fees, $25,000 for a piece of property the city sold to Tennessee Tech University, $46,000 for just sales of various vehicles and equipment that were declared surplus, $12,000 worth of police department items that were declared surplus, and $23,000 in insurance recovery for a backhoe that, that caught fire. So we received $23,000 in insurance recoveries. In grants, we had additional $60,000 in state grant from the governor's highway safety office, and $25,000 in internet crimes against children's grant. And additional expenditures that we have to recognize is a total of $316,100. $60,000 of that relates to the governor's highway safety grant. We also have the internet child, internet crimes against children's grant. That was $25,000. We have the revenue to go along with the additional expenditures there. Under operating expenses, we have, in the general fund, the $7,800 worth of additional expenses for building maintenance. This, this facility here, we purchased additional refrigerant for this building and for all the city properties around, around the city. And liability claims, we have additional $25,000 in expenditures over budget there. Personnel costs relating to planning and codes of $20,000. Leisure services personnel costs $29,000. And public works personnel costs $6,000. We have additional work comp claims in the fire department of $20,000, and our public works and streets and maintenance department, $100,000. And parks department, parks and maintenance, $12,000 in additional work comp claims. And then in capital items, we have a $10,000 for a new server in the police department. Their, their server crashed, so we needed to replace that. And then additional $1,300 in leisure services for the gator that they purchased. That came in a little over budget. So additional expenditures of $316,100. Now, just to give you an idea where the fund balance, we expect the fund balance to be for the general fund at the end of June 30, 2014. We expect that to be somewhere around $8.7 million, which is a healthy fund balance. The next fund, State Street Aid Fund, we have additional revenue of $23,000. That was a sale of the asphalt zipper that was declared surplus. That was sold. That was $23,000 we received. We have additional expenditures of $5,000 for the two items, two capital items that were purchased that came in a little over what was originally budgeted. That was the leaf vacuum and attractors. Those, those two items came in about $5,000 over budget. So $23,000 additional revenue, $5,000 in additional expenditures. That fund balance projected to be about $953,000 at June 30. Then the sanitation fund, we have additional revenue of $19,000 to, to recognize, and additional expenditures of a total of $104,500. The, the additional expenditures relate to salaries and wages of $14,500. Repairs and maintenance on commercial sanitation trucks, that's a total of $41,000 over budget. We have work comp claims as well in our brush division of their sanitation fund of additional $38,000. And repairs and maintenance to equipment in our brush division, the, the brush truck had $11,000 worth of repairs done on it recently. So that was a total of $104,500 in additional expenditures, only $19,000 in additional revenue. We are looking to spend into this fund balance, decrease that fund balance 70 to 80,000 this, by June 30 of this fiscal year. That fund balance will be around $305,000 at June 30. And the last fund that I have is the drug fund. We have additional expenditures there, $10,000. That's all related to investigations, drug investigations, undercover work done by the police department, and $10,800 in related to rent where the police department stored confiscated vehicles. And we paid for a location for that. That ended May 1, so we now have all those confiscated vehicles on site, on a city site where we don't have to pay rent for that. But that's an additional expenditures in the drug fund of $20,800. And the estimated balance for the drug fund at June 30, 2014 would be a little over $33,000. But I would recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I was just going to point out, you know, a lot of times it gets said in government, if you, if you take more money in, they just find a way to spend it and all that. So there's, the first two funds we went over, we collected, we increased $15,000, $18,000. So we didn't just find a way to spend it.
We did spend all of it.
Right.
So that's good.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, item eight, set a date June 19, 2014 for a public hearing on ordinance 140506, annexation and zoning of 1.3 acres located on the northwest corner of Summerfield Road and Fisk Road, and resolution 140510, adopting plan of services for the same. Sponsor is Ms. Kathy McLean.
We set the date for June 19, 2014 at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine, consider appointment of representative to the Putnam County Tax Equalization Board. Sponsor is Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, Mr. John Donnelly has agreed to serve on the tax equalization board. I would have thought he knew better, but evidently he doesn't. And I'm very proud to recommend John for the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 11, consider approval of Cookeville-Putnam County Chamber Community Appearance Committee Action Plan. Sponsor is Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you. Mayor and council, it is my honor and privilege to present to you the inaugural Cookeville-Putnam County Chamber Community Appearance Committee Action Plan. There are several members of the committee here tonight. And at this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Ms. Jill Horner. She is the chairman of this committee.
Well, mayor and council members, for the past year or so, we have been gathering a group of community leaders. We, meaning the, the chamber, and we are a committee of the chamber, task force of the chamber. And really, the mission of that task force has been to determine areas that we could enhance the appearance of our city. And while we have some, we're blessed with some beautiful assets that we have here, our downtown area and various other things, there is always room for improvement. So our committee and task force have been working for the past year to come up with an action plan to address some of those issues. And we're here tonight to kind of present this, a little, a brief presentation to you, and then to ask for your approval of our plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Brandon Stevenson, who is with the chamber, and he's going to show you just a little bit about what we've done.
Mayor and councilmen, the mission of the Community Appearance Committee is to provide practical ways to improve city appearance and enhance the quality of life and economic development in the region. So it's consistent of four committees, a steering committee, a project committee, education and promotion and public relations committee. So the first thing that we did when getting together is we partnered with Todd Morgan of the Tennessee Main Street Association, performed a SWOT analysis, so strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis, just to kind of see where we have room for improvement. So why is it important? It affects our quality of life and it affects our business recruitment. So I do have some examples on the slides of why that's important. This is the city of Santa Clarita, California. This was a community action of replacing a high water demand fescue with mulch. Not only is that more visually appealing, but that saves over 100,000 gallons of water monthly for the city. So that can be fiscally important for the city as well. This one you might recognize, this is the pocket park right next to the farmer's market. Without that, you know, we wouldn't have seen the recruitment of the condos next door and kind of just the upheaval of that west side. Things as simple as signage renewal, a cracked sign versus a, a good, nice, new sign. There's never a second chance to make a first appearance. And we want to make sure that Cookeville plays as primetime as we look. And then this one you may or may not recognize, but this is the depot west side. And I think that speaks for itself. Anyone who has driven down Cedar abroad can say that that's played a huge part in the revitalization of our downtown, both economically and socially. So we have tried to identify a few areas of opportunity. We would love to improve some signage and key entryways to the city, such as I-40 on Willow. In a survey done by Tennessee Tech Sociology Department, Dr. Jennifer Anderson, they surveyed Cookeville, Cookeville people and asked, where are some areas that they would love to see some corridor improvement? And the top three places that popped up were Highway 70, Willow Avenue, and Jefferson Avenue. We would love to help work with city council, Putnam County, and the Tennessee Department of Transportation to help facilitate forward movement. The pieces are already in place. We would just love to be a facilitator and an aid, aid in seeking funding, aid in seeking grants. And in that same survey by Dr. Anderson, 58% people said that they would volunteer their time or better their own property in order to contribute to a better community appearance. Obviously, long-term residents, property owners polled much more interested in outward appearance than renters. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chamber of Commerce President CEO George Helford for closing remarks.
Thank you, Brandon. Mayor and council, one of the things we do is restate the obvious a lot. And thank you for your tradition of support. This is not new. I was talking to former mayor Bobby Davis this morning and Mr. Shipley. Community appearance is an ongoing long-term effort. So we just appreciate the support. This has really been a, a community, a very diverse committee. We've had, for the last year, the hospital, Tennessee Tech, the city, Melinda, and others. So there's been quite citizens, businesses. So it's been quite a, quite, and it's just a beginning. This is just a, but we're, we, it is economic development. There's a, I can't quote the source, but I read somewhere some time ago that psychologists say that 60% of a person's lasting impression of a person, place, or thing is the first visual impression. So we, we're, whether it's the 45,000 people riding up and down our interstate every day, people coming about their, sending their, thinking about their children going to Tennessee Tech, or our hospital, or industry looking. I was, I was recently reminded, some things just don't change. I was at a Tennessee Economic Development Meet the Consultants program here a few weeks ago, when one of the consultants told the story about a, a privately-held company. A husband and his wife had pretty well decided to move a, a company to a coastal town in, I think it was West Florida. And they checked, they decided to go spend a, a three-day weekend there. And literally, they checked in and after three days there, they made a decision that they were going to reconsider and maybe move the company somewhere else because they, they just thought the community appearance, they thought the, as they traveled the town, they just did not see the community pride. So I know we have a history of, of working together to make that happen. So just appreciate the committee, Jill Horner, and the team, and the city, and everything we're doing. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this has been presented to y'all in a work session. So Jill, Molly Brown, anyone, any questions you would have or comments?
My first one is, those 58% that said they would volunteer, did you get their names and phone numbers?
Well, one of the things in work session that came out, I think the fact that this is a grassroots organization committee, coming from the community, the people of the community, and certainly, as a member of the city council, I'm 100% behind you. And I think that when we get the buy-in from the larger community, that's what matters. It's people, I mean, my husband and I work, walk all over Cookeville, and we pick up trash when we walk our little beagle. And we pick up her trash too, by the way. So we're not one of those people. But, you know, and I've noticed that the park, people have been very respectful of it. So appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Yeah. After Jill and Lee came to the work session, I was very impressed with the cross-section of, you know, you're trying to get a consensus of the community. And like Alma said, we like it when the community initiates this and it works its way up. We've had several events in the last few years where the chambersmen have been very involved, the Blue Cross Bowl, the hog rally, where it's brought people into our community. And people just thought of us as a rest, a rest stop, gas filling, you know, get food. As we get away from the interstate, they have found what a great city, how beautiful it is. We just need to make the entrance a little more inviting for it to get them into downtown because they really appreciate what we have done and the citizens and the private owners have done. Of course, the city has worked with the Dogwood Park, with private ownership and taking pride of their buildings. And just the activity, there's a vitality with, on the square and on the west side, that people say we're a vibrant community, take pride in ownership and appearance. There's more that we can do, but that you've made the effort. And it's been on, it's impressive that you've been on it for over a year. And you're getting feed, feedback and trying to get information. And it's an information, trying to get everybody on the same page, which I commend you and salute you for doing that. Thanks so much.
I also want to thank the committee for how in-depth you went into this project because, I mean, I heard that this was first formed. Why, I started thinking this in my own mind as to what, you know, could probably be addressed. But you all went so much further into that and, and have really done a wonderful job. And I applaud you for the time that it took to do this. And I thank you.
My turn.
Hey, I do have a question. I mean, it's all, this is all well and good, but I mean, it's like, when, when, how soon do we get started? I mean, what's your action, action implementation plan? I mean, when can we get this thing on the road and get moving?
Probably the next thing you'll hear from us is, we would love to start a community pride initiative. And we wanted to start with you all, obviously, first. And our goal is to take this presentation and maybe another version of it to Rotary Clubs, Civic Clubs, everywhere, just to get people on board, let them understand what the purpose is. It's really a volunteer and a community effort. And our goal is to, you know, use a lot of elbow grease, as well as seek funding from grant opportunities to, to do some really work that's going to be visibly different and visibly an improvement.
So your, your plans is to, to get this moving by going to community groups, you asked for the council's, council's thumbs up, and boy, we, did we give a thumbs, thumbs up, high fives, et cetera, cheers and hoots and hollers. But, so it's to go off to other, other various philanthropy groups?
Yes.
And then after that, it, it's time to get elbow grease going?
Well, we're actually working on an inaugural project now that includes maybe some welcome signs located near the exits. And we're working on that. It's very, in the very beginning stages, but that'll probably be our first project that we'll hit the ground running with.
Well, I appreciate it because, I mean, I'm not going to, don't want to re-enter. I don't want to bore you. But this is fun for us. I mean, we, we sit and do budgets and things like that, and they're all very important. But, and we'll get through it and get it done. But we have a great time doing, I have a great time doing this. And I appreciate making our council meetings a little bit more fun, a little bit more exciting for things like this. It's all important, but these, these are fun. And I just, I just appreciate, appreciate mostly because we get a lot of bang for our buck. This is, these are, if, if the council, if the city of Cookeville needs to spend some money to help, help us out with sidewalks, corridors, or things like that, it's, it's the biggest bang for our buck that we can, that many times that we could do, sitting here. So I am, I'm excited about some of the opportunities that we have as a council to help implement, implement this plan. So thank you guys for your work.
Thank you.
And I look forward, look forward to working with you guys in the future.
I want to say something, too. I just appreciate, throughout this whole year, we've talked to several department heads, and they have been just wonderful. Melinda has been awesome to work with us and, and kind of lead us through this. And we've just established a good rapport, I think, with the city leaders. And we're just appreciative of that effort and their, their willingness to support and, and help us with this. And I also want to recognize our community, committee members who are here, a few of them are here, Lee Ray, Ryan Jorsted, Molly Brown, you've met Brandon Stevenson, and of course, George. Roman Stone and Mark Hutchins are also on our steering committee. So thank you to all of them. They've been wonderful.
Well, I also want to say thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
No, you go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. We, we appreciate when people come even to our meetings.
It's getting more and more.
And then appreciate it even more when they stand up and, and they speak about some certain things, whatever it is we're talking about. Because, you know, even if we don't agree with, with what they're saying, at least they have an opinion because it shows they care, you know? So for us to get behind a, a group of citizens that, that want to do this, that care this much, it's a slam dunk for us. We just, we're excited to be a part of your thing. You know, we, we consider it your project, and we're just going to support it as much as we can.
One, one group that you've mentioned, the Rotary Club and other civic groups, but the Boy Scouts, you know, have Eagle projects.
Yes.
And of course, they don't have the ability to do very large projects, but you might pick some smaller projects that would be good and contact each of those scout troops in the area. Because that, they would be, I'm sure they would, it's always hard to find good ideas for Eagle projects.
Those groups have come up.
And they would probably be glad, yeah. They would probably be very glad to help out on something like this. And so that's maybe one resource you could look into.
We will, we will definitely use them.
We may even have a Boy Scout in the room.
Or two, or three.
Two. Had one that walked out, I think.
The head Boy Scout.
Troop 371 or 4, 4, or 412?
Yes, sir. Well, 371 and 412.
Okay.
Well, thanks for coming.
Your signing sheet's over.
Thank you.
But we, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess we need to-
We need to vote?
Well, we're actually working on an inaugural project now that includes maybe some welcome signs located near the exits. We're working on that, it's very, in the very beginning stages, but that'll probably be our first project that we'll hit the ground running with.
Well, I appreciate it because, I mean, I'm not going to, don't want to reenter, I don't want to bore you, but this is fun for us. I mean, we, we sit and do budgets and things like that, and they're all very important, but, and we'll get through it and get it done, but we have a great time doing, I have a great time doing this, and I appreciate making our council meetings a little bit more fun, a little bit more exciting for things like this. It's all important, but these, these are fun, and I just, I just appreciate, appreciate mostly because we get a lot of bang for our buck. This is, these are, if, if the council, if the city of Cookeville needs to spend some money to help, help us out with sidewalks, corridors, or things like that, it's, it's the biggest bang for our buck that we can, that many times that we could do, sitting here. So, I am, I'm excited about some of the opportunities that we have as a council to help implement, implement this plan. So, thank you guys for your work, and I look forward, look forward to working with you guys in the future.
I want to say something too. I just appreciate, throughout this whole year, we've talked to several department heads, and they have been just wonderful. Melinda has been awesome to work with us and kind of lead us through this, and we've just established a good rapport, I think, with the city leaders, and we're just appreciative of that effort and their, their willingness to support and, and help us with this. And I also want to recognize our community, committee members who are here, a few of them are here, Lee Ray, Ryan Jorsted, Molly Brown, you've met Brandon Stevenson, and of course, George. Roman Stone and Mark Hutchins are also on our steering committee, so thank you to all of them, they've been wonderful.
Well, I also want to say thank you. Mr. Edelweiss.
No, you go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. We, we appreciate when people come even to our meetings.
It's getting more and more.
And then appreciate it even more when they stand up and, and they speak about some certain things, whatever it is we're talking about, because, you know, even if we don't agree with, with what they're saying, at least they have an opinion because it shows they care, you know? So, for us to get behind a group of citizens that, that want to do this, that care this much, it's a slam dunk for us. We just, we're excited to be a part of your thing. You know, we, we consider it your project, and we're just going to support it as much as we can.
One, one group that you've mentioned, the Rotary Club and other civic groups, but the Boy Scouts, you know, have Eagle projects, and of course, they don't have the ability to do very large projects, but you might pick some smaller projects that would be good and contact each of those scout troops in the area because that, they would be, I'm sure they would, it's always hard to find good ideas for Eagle projects.
Those groups have come up.
They would probably be very glad to help out on something like this, and so that's maybe one resource you could look into.
We will, we will definitely use them.
We may even have a Boy Scout in the room.
Or two, or three.
Two. Had one that walked out, I think, but.
Head Boy Scout.
Troop 371 or 4, 4, or 412?
Yes, sir. Well, 371 and 412.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming.
Your signing sheet's over.
But we, we appreciate it. I guess we need to.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah, I guess we need to vote.
Do we?
Do we like this?
Well, well.
We need a motion.
Some move.
Zach.
That we approve, approve this.
All right. If you agree with it, let's vote yes.
Just, yeah.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
I got a little nervous that we were talking about it before there was a motion on the floor, but I held back because of my excitement.
Okay. That was, that was fun. Now we get to, let's get down to business.
Now we get to real fun stuff.
Let's go do, let's go. Come on.
Sorry, Greg. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Boyd Klein, and I'm making myself available for City Council. And of course, we brought this up before of my pet peeve, of the west side, west of Willow to Chestnut, that the city fathers have decided that it is a blighted community. And I rebuke the thought because what it will probably end up doing is apartment houses from Ninth to Broad ultimately. And I have five properties in that neighborhood, and I do not want them condemned. Young Raider was here last week and said, or a couple of weeks ago, said that by law, they couldn't condemn my property based on a case in Massachusetts. I believe that this area should be seriously considered for a hospital community to the, as a neighborhood to the hospital. Let tech build out to the weeds, okay? But let's take a hard look at that area for the elderly. Let's not kick them out of their trailers. I mean, we need, we need to think about this because Larry Epps had a good question, and the lady that was in the one trailer, she was 99 years old, and she had a 71-year-old daughter taking care of her on West 7th. And I don't like the term blighted because I'm in there everyday rehabbing, and I don't know who established that, or if it's a political stunt to acquire grants. I think there's a twist to this, and I think we need to take a look at honesty with that neighborhood. And like I say again, I think it would be a perfect neighborhood not to jam a bunch more of apartments in and build out into the street, which they did at Seventh Street, on a variance, and shame on the City Council for that. We need to take a look at, and you know, I've, I've got that pretty well figured out, I think. There was a footprint taken from Seventh Street to Ninth Street, and GAW built out into Seventh Street so that the footprint would get him to Ninth Street eventually, or somebody. If that be true, shame on us. I think that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Okay. On item 12, consider approval to purchase a hydraulic pump for an excavator. Sponsored by Mr. Greg Brown from Home Works.
Mayor and Council, the hydraulic pump on our trackhoe recently failed. We received two quotes for a replacement pump, one from NorTrax for $12,897.11, another one from King's Truck Service for $12,171.49, and I would recommend the low, low quote from King's Truck Service. I request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move. Zach.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I'm 13. Consider approval of engineering contract amendment for the sanitary sewer tank sizing and location. Sponsored by Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, last, in April of 2012, the council authorized our department to enter into an engineering contract with Gretchen Smith Partners. That contract was structured to provide our department with some consulting and engineering services to help us develop a sewer model of the sanitary sewer system that would help us formulate new capital improvement projects in the future. As Cookeville grows and we add sewer customers on it, this will help us prevent bottlenecks and pinch points and those kind of things, and prevent sanitary sewer overflows, hopefully. So, during that contract, we developed the model, got it done. Now we're at the next phase and need to do an engineering contract amendment to that to do the next phase, was to run the model, try to identify a place or places, locations in, in the certain areas that have indicated some issues, and for us to be able to start planning for, do we need to acquire property in the future, sizes and those type of things. And so, this, this amendment number two will help us do that. Trying to think, this was sort of the model in what we did originally was flow monitor the arteries, basically the arteries of the system. The model, and it's sort of a different graph, but the sort of the main artery coming down through the middle of town sort of turned red during two, a two-year, 24-hour storm event. So, that just indicates that there's some, it's getting full during certain times, and so we need to look at that. And what we're trying to prevent is these, these spikes and peaks filling the pipe up and getting out. And so, what you will do is try to figure out where we could offload some of that temporarily during those certain events during a year, maybe not too many, but, and so, we recommend your approval on this contract amendment number two.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Zach. Questions or comments? Seeing none? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 14, consider approval of an energy efficiency demonstration project agreement between the city of Cookeville and TVA, Tennessee Valley Authority. Sponsored by Mr. Tony Peak from Cookeville Electric.
Mayor and Council, this is an agreement between the city of Cookeville and TVA providing for a heat pump, water heating demonstration project. Tennessee Tech was chosen as the participant, and TVA, in collaboration with EPRI, the Electric Power Research Institute, will conduct the project. It'll take place at the laundry at Tennessee Tech off of Willow. TVA and EPRI will provide all the equipment, materials, design, everything, at no expense to TDU. As I mentioned, the project will be conducted at the laundry. The demonstration will basically seek to independently quantify some of the energy savings that are being talked about with this type of a project. Benefits to TDU include domestic hot water, energy cost savings, some capacity to reduce cooling costs, understanding the energy savings potential, and experience in applying the new technology. And one of the great things about it is once the project's over and EPRI and TVA have all the information they want, they give all the equipment to TDU. I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Zach. Questions, comments?
Mr. Peak, this is like the LED lights that we were able to participate in, right? That.
That is correct.
Yeah.
The project in the lower lot with LED lights initially was a demonstration project between EPRI and TVA and the city of Cookeville.
So, it's always good.
Anything else? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. We mentioned earlier, I think we do have some Boy Scouts. Which troop are you with? 371? 371, would you like to come forward?
He's a proud member of Avery Trace Middle School.
Yes. What's your name, sir?
Ben Reed.
Ben Reed, all right. We want to get a picture for the paper, is that all right?
No. No.
Oh, you never go. Never.
What about me prepared? What about me prepared? What about me prepared?
Hey, I'll take your place.
There you go. Good job, Ben.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we appreciate you coming. We do. We really appreciate, appreciate you coming. This is a part, the portion of the meeting where we open the floor to hear from citizens or delegations. Please come forward. We ask, state your name, keep it to three minutes if you could.
This weekend, Cityscape has taxed the town, sold out, waiting list, great.
And I want to remind people that the school systems will be shutting down next week, and that we will have a lot more young people out and about, so be aware of that when you're out. I've noticed in the pretty weather, of course, today it's cold, but in the pretty weather, I've seen a lot more children out on the streets, in their, on their bicycles, skateboards. So, when you're out and about in your car, beware of our youth so that you save their lives, be careful of them.
The Story Fest in the park last Saturday was very good. I did attend it, and I hope it is an annual event. Leisure Services, Rick Woods, a lot of the, Beth Thompson, Judy Duke, a lot of them helped out with that, and it was very successful.
I did something. I did something, I don't know what.
Molly Brown with the Chamber, we actually have Run for the Wall coming on Monday. Oh, thank you. 350 to 400 bikers are going to be traveling through Cookeville, making Cookeville a major stop.
Molly, I'm sorry, do you care to come to the?
Yeah, let's hear it.
People watching at home can't hear you unless you, unless you.
Molly, Brown with the Chamber, we have Run for the Wall coming on Monday, May 19th. There's going to be 350 to 400 bikers coming through, making Cookeville a major stop on a new route. This is a veterans motorcycle group that starts in Los Angeles and ends in Arlington National Cemetery. They, a lot of them are running in honor of a veteran, or they are a veteran themselves. So, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to be part of a great event, and we're going to be hosting a welcome event at the Town Center for them, a dinner, and they'll be coming down Jefferson Avenue at 4:40 on Monday.
This Monday?
This Monday. And we have a police escort starting at the exit, leading them all the way to the Town Center, and we'll have a big welcome event for them. Mayor's going to be there to welcome on behalf of the city. And then the next morning, they're going to be leaving at 9:00 a.m., but between 8:00 and 9:00, we're going to do a meet and greet at Sam's Club, which is where they'll be staging. Any questions about that?
Will you get that information to us?
Yes, we've sent that, and Tracy has it, so.
Because I'm putting it on my calendar, let's.
And we encourage the entire community to come out on Jefferson and welcome them and bring flags for anybody who's got marquees on, on Jefferson. We've already had some of our American Legion, some of our other VSOs actually out hitting the streets to let the businesses on Jefferson know.
Two years ago, I happened to be in Washington, DC when they hit Arlington, and I have to tell you, it was a very impressive show, just wonderful and worthwhile cause.
Their leadership came through last year. There was about eight to nine of them that came through testing this new route, and Mr. Shipley was actually, I remember he was a part of that when we had a little reception for them at the Veterans Building. And they were so impressed with the hospitality of Cookeville, they had to make it a major stop on their route. So, I think that really speaks to where we're going, and of course, motorcycle tourism is really picking up. Of course, the following week on Tuesday, the 27th, we'll have the Hog Rally coming into town. My goal is 4,000 people, so we'll see. We have over 1,900 pre-registrations for that event, and everything's going really well with that.
1,900 pre-registration.
Open to the public events for that Tuesday night. We're having a welcome party at Boswell's, and then they'll be opening ceremonies that are open to the public on, at Dogwood Park that Tuesday night, the 27th, and then the 29th is the West Side Street Party. We'll be shutting the west side down. All the public is encouraged to come to that as well. And then on Saturday, a parade. So, lots going on, lots of.
This is the second time in the last three years we've had this, right?
This has made Harley Davidson history for Tennessee to be able to host. We're the smallest city to ever host it, with only city in Tennessee to ever be awarded the hosting privileges consecutive years.
Yes. Thank you.
Molly, I have a question. You're talking about the Sam's Club gathering this coming Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday morning on the 20th.
Okay. I thought we were supposed to have business before hours on that Tuesday.
We have both.
Oh, okay.
We couldn't control when their route was coming through, obviously, so it'll be, we'll be doing double duty that morning.
Just goes to show, when it comes to hospitality, don't, don't mess with Cookeville, okay?
That's right.
Because we'll, we'll kick your tail when it comes to hospitality. And, and last I want to add, I mean, if you've ever been, if you've ever been to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Washington, DC, that's a very moving, a moving memorial. The World War II memorial is very moving, but very moving, and I, I'm thank, I want to thank the Chamber, taking the time to make sure that these guys are, are welcome. It's, 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 it's an honor. It's an honor for Cookeville to be a, a part of this memorial ride.
I agree. As I was working through the agenda today, I kept getting emotional because they're also going to be honoring a couple of our Gold Star Mothers here, locals who have lost children to war. So, there'll be a special presentation from them to our local Gold Star Mothers, so that'll be a great opportunity as well to be honored.
Well, I appreciate the Chamber and your hard work, finding a niche with the motorcycle as far as the destination, you know, its economic development, its tourism, I mean, it's bringing people to our community and it's showing off our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we hope a lot of people show up Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning, these folks that come through town.
I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to continue to show that hospitality.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Thanks, Molly.
Anyone else? This meeting's adjourned.